Sarah Ford is here from Endot.
What time does it start?
We need to get our records going.
What time is that B O T meeting?
One.
Thank you.
I have to tell you I'm loving this Christmas music. This is so nice.
All right, we're back from recess. It is ten thirteen and at this time we're going to do the meeting with the mayor of Delphi and Endot. Go ahead, young lady.
Very few people have called me young lady anymore, so that's a...
I just do that all the time.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
Our Commissioner Pearson, I appreciate that. So, this project is really about the bridge over Deer Creek, which is scheduled for replacement in twenty twenty three, correct? Going to bid late this year? Is that correct, Chris?
Yeah.
Scheduled, yeah, so... I think about a year and three quarters or so ago, Hanson, who is the engineering firm on those contacted the city and county highway and others to let them know that they were going to have some meetings regarding the deck replacement for this bridge on Old State Road twenty five. Adam Parkhouse is joining us now as well.
Good morning.
Thank you. And in July, I sent a letter to Endot. This is such a crucial area for the connection of all of our historic trail system. And as you know, hiking is, biking are really important cultural and recreational elements for the city and for the county. And this particular bridge is kind of pivotal for future plans that the Wobash River Enhancement Corporation has to connect the Profitstown State Park with Delphi's historic trail system. So, we contacted, I contacted Endot in July of twenty twenty one to request that they consider some options for this bridge. And first of which was to do a separated lane for bicycle and pedestrian crossing over that bridge. As you know, there's a lot of truck traffic and potential for this to become a truck route. So, having that separated lane would be really critical to protect pedestrians and bicyclists who would utilize that area to travel from Profitstown State Park to Delphi and then beyond using our trail system. The other thing that we asked that they considered was a tunnel underneath the bridge that would connect the trails on either side of Deer Creek. Right now, that connection is at creek level. And when we get rains, it silt's up and it's several days before it's passable again. So, we asked that a tunnel be considered so that the elevation would be such that, and you know, the passage would be protected. So, those were critical elements and we've kind of been talking about that since. And as the plans have evolved, I think Lauren has attended one meeting that we had with the Transportation Committee from Carroll County Administrative Transportation Committee. Commissioner Brown attended the meeting that we had at the city building that included county and city representatives. And we're kind of down now coming towards the wire on this. There is additional costs that will be associated with the lane separation to put that in and also for the tunnel under the bridge to provide the connectivity for the trails. One of the suggestions as a means of accomplishing this and further discussion has also taken place about the consideration of a roundabout at the Dairy Queen area that would keep all of the traffic moving rather than having the traffic light there. So, some of these funding considerations have involved consideration of relinquishment of Old State Road twenty five to the, which would be a relinquishment or a road transfer to the county. And, you know, I'm sure there, this is, there are lots of things to consider in that. It was proposed, I think, back when Hoosier Heartland Highway was coming through. Lauren, I don't know if you were on the commission at that time, but they did talk about relinquishment of Old State Road twenty five to the county then. And the concerns were that, you know, this bridge was really dated and would need quite a bit of work. Of course, now we're at the point where it's going to be replaced. So, with upgrades to the road and to the bridge, is this a time to consider that option? Which would provide the ability to get some of these extras, if you will, amenities done, probably without additional cost to the county or city. So, that takes it about to my level of expertise, which is down here. And now we'll kind of break it over to Endot. But I do want to reiterate how important our trail system is to, certainly to, it's something that the county has a great deal of pride in and of course the city as well. And Mr. Trails, Dan McCain, who really has been instrumental in helping with hundreds of volunteers to establish the trail system at Delphi that is known nationally. So, we certainly appreciate your time and thank you for extending your meeting so that we could get this in today. So, with that, Adam Parkhouse, would you like to?
Morning. Morning. Thanks for having us here. How did it start, you know, so it was, we had a good time and then there was a train that just wasn't moving. So, I tried to push it out of the way, but it was not successful. So, thank you for having us here. My name is Adam Parkhouse. I'm the Director of Stakeholder Services for the Lepore District and Northwest District. We appreciate the ability to come here and talk to you all about this today. We've been working with Dear Worthing and her staff for a while on this, as she mentioned. But obviously, there's a county element or component to this potentially if this were to go forward. So, I can speak for myself saying in the agency that we appreciate the partnership with Carroll County and the city of Delphi, not just on this potential issue, but then on all of the issues too. We have a decent relationship in the past and forward to that continuing in the future. So, Sarah Ford is here. She's our Technical Services Director. And she, when we talk about road transfer, relinquishment, we use those terms interchangeably. They essentially mean the same thing, but that's kind of what we're talking about here. But it would be her and her group that kind of works out the finer details of that. So, she's a smart person when it comes to that stuff. Someone like her to speak. But I just wanted to say that I appreciate the ability to be here today and partner. You know, we are, as the mayor mentioned, getting to a pretty critical point on the planning stages of our bridge project, which is kind of what led to this whole conversation. We do think there's a unique opportunity here, potentially, to work together on something like this. But the time to move on this one way or the other is definitely sort of upon us just because we do have this bridge project that we need to move forward one way or the other. And so, we don't lose funding for that project. I'm going to let Sarah kind of come up and speak to some of the finer details of what a road transfer might look like, so that you guys can all digest that. To that end, feel free to ask any questions if you have a question.
Good morning. Sarah Ford, I'm the Technical Services Director for the Lepore District. Thanks for having us today. I'm going to start a little to the backside and talk about what the relinquishment process looks like. So typically, when a section of roadway no longer serves our network, we talk to the local about any interest they may have and what it may serve them. And so, when the mayor approached us about this, we knew these conversations happened previously and that the bridge was of one of the most utmost concerns. And we know with replacement, we thought this might be a good time to entertain a relinquishment or road transfer. I'll define those, we use those interchangeably, but I'll define them just briefly. A road transfer gives you the operations and maintenance rights to the roadway. A relinquishment actually gives you the property earnings, which would allow you to take it and turn into something besides a transportation network. And in the case which we're talking, even though we say relinquishment, it's really a road transfer, it would still be expected to be a portion of a transportation network. It looks a little different in different places. Sometimes that includes rail versus highway. We've dealt with some things with the port as well too, where things have changed. But again, just encompassing the transportation network. So, what we typically do, we're about to have our conversation with the local as we look at what portions of roadway are really looking to relinquish. So, we have about six center lane miles total. They're kind of in some pieces that you're probably aware of as the realignment to the Hoosier Heartland that came through. So, we then go through our capital program and go, okay, what do we have programmed in the next five years it's funded of work that we're doing in that area? So, I'll go over those projects quickly first. The largest one that we have is the bridge replacement. And that's set for, I think it's still on time for fiscal year twenty four, but letting in twenty three. Is it still left to be let this?
I think so. The construction will change again.
Well, we may have to. In how this has played out, we've had the conversations with the mayor and with a few folks from the county. What's happened is we've delayed our project a little bit. So, we're still looking to be able to deliver it within the fiscal year and then in the appropriate construction year. But we're looking at complete bridge replacement. So, when the mayor reached out to us to ask us about what it looks like to have that additional lane, separated lane at grade, as well as the tunnel, those are things that Endot didn't have scoped into the original project. But we work with many locals from this aspect and have an agreement and make these additions at the appropriate time, right? Three months before the project's to be let isn't the appropriate time. So, we are kind of at the wire here of making some decisions about what we're going to do to be able to still deliver this project timely. In addition, we look at what other roadways might be invested. So, I have one, two, three, four, four other sections of roadway minus a very small point seven miles in Crawfordville District. That three out of the four are already in our funded program. So, the work that are going to be done. So, unfortunately, we don't go from this road to that road. We use what we call pavement keys. And so, that doesn't always equate from the start of one road to the finish of another road. But they are the full segment from either cul-de-sac to intersection or intersection to intersection on each of these roadways. So, the first one, we have a minor structural overlay, which equals about a mile of center lane. We have the second one, and again, this is in fiscal year twenty four as well. All three of these are in fiscal year twenty four. Another section that's one point one mile, and that's a minor structural overlay. The same with the third pavement key, fiscal year twenty four, one point two miles. So, again, we're looking to do this work very quickly. The bridge work, three of the four sections. The fourth section, we have a modeling system in that where we forecast twenty years out. And part of our modeling system has this fourth section in fiscal year twenty nine as proposed. We're only in twenty right now, so it doesn't have the funding yet. But in negotiations, if there is interest in a road transfer, that's something that we could confirm and make sure that not funded. One of the other pieces we have is a small structure maintenance repair. That's also going to happen in fiscal year twenty four and it's aligned with one of the pavement projects.
Is this all in Carroll County that you're talking about?
Yes, yes. The only small spicism is the point seven miles from Crawfordville District. So, I've reached out to Bill Smith, who's my peer there, and he's like, we're all in. You tell us what to do. I think there's one thing that I will mention that came up in discussion that really doesn't have anything to do with Endot and more has to do with county to county is if this were a signed truck route, we'd want to make sure that it can't just end at the end of Carroll County, right? I mean, you can, but just as forewarning, making sure you're working with the other county to make sure that those, the signage is appropriate. Endot has also agreed that if you prefer this to be the truck route to alleviate some of the trucks that are downtown, we will definitely work with you on what that looks like from a permit aspect. So, the local can apply for a permit at no cost. We weigh the bonds. You just submit your plan to us. We review it just to make sure that it meets guidelines for things that are on state highways. And then we would allow that route to be signed as a truck route. Now, I know there were some concerns earlier about, well, we're putting trucks on that road. We need to beef it up. It was a state highway. It's still a state highway. We maintain it as such. The trucks don't, aren't required to use it or aren't required to stay off of it. Any state route has applicable truck traffic unless there's a temporary restriction, maybe upgrading for a bridge or something like that. But that's very rare. We have very few across the state of those. So, I know that there were some concerns about what that looked like for the county from a future maintenance perspective. But we were treating this road as if trucks were still on it.
I would jump.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of trucks basically.
Yeah. One of the other discussions that we have is we go ahead and look into our work management system. And we look over the course of the last three years and we identify the costs that we've spent in in-house maintenance. Because we've talked all about capital program. Now, we'll talk about in-house maintenance. What it costs to remove snow, what it costs to crack seal, what it costs to fill potholes, those types of things. And right now, we would be at our highest cost with three of these projects being slated for fiscal year twenty four, right? That's when we're probably putting our biggest amount of maintenance in. We're looking at about six thousand dollars. So, when we look at the relinquishment, we look at pavement from a ten-year perspective. What are we going to be doing over the next ten years? And bridge, we look over twenty-five years because the life of the bridge is much longer. With a brand new bridge being constructed here, what we would look at would be very minimal. We're not going to have any extensive capital program work. It would be some maintenance work that we anticipate. So, what we usually do is we take that number and we spread that over ten years, over fifteen years from a maintenance perspective and determine what type of operations money that you'll need to support. In turn, once the road transfer is executed, the MVH funding also goes to the county, right? And then all, for the bridge, and then whoever took over the roadway would then also receive the funding for that mileage for that section of road as well too. So, it's not a, here you go. There's still some things that happen behind the scenes. But what we're looking to do is give you a brand new bridge and prove every section of roadway that we have that we would, that you would be interested in taking into a transfer agreement and providing you that opportunity and then a small sum for operating maintenance moving forward.
So, you replace the bridge, you resurface any of the roads at all?
Yes. So, all four sections, three sections of road are actually funded right now. The fourth section is slated for fiscal year twenty nine, and that's based off need. We have a modeling system that goes needs for us over the course of twenty years, whether it be a resurface, whether it be a thin deck overlay, whatever that is. We have a complete asset management system that we utilize.
My other concern would be the ditch is going that way. A lot of springs. A gentleman out there, Reggie Damm, hired for his pond off that road and it's supposed to flow opposite way to what it is now. Now it's flooding other properties. We've talked about that in our drainage board, but it's a state ditch right now.
And he's altered the state ditch, just for me to be clear?
It seems that way. I can't say, sure, I just know the pond is up another foot and I have two foot from one from where it used to be.
If you could provide me the address of that location, I can have our drainage engineer take a look at that.
Can you do that for me, Kim? You know where I'm talking about? Area plan, Cameron is.
Cameron, if you can just email it to me, I'd appreciate it. And then we'll look into that.
Okay.
And we'll look into that regardless of where we are today, right? I mean, if there's a drainage issue, we're.
If we get a good rain and springs come up, it just comes over the river. Makes it a little bit of a hydrant out that way.
Absolutely. I'll be honest with you, eighty-five percent of what I deal with in my job has to do with drainage.
And that's one of my biggest concerns. If you repave it, our ditches will need to be worth a lot of people over there. They won't tear up the road.
Is that the only area of concern for drainage?
That's on that road again. And the other part of the.
And just to know if you're concerned on any other state highways, please don't be shy about.
No.
Sharing that. We're glad to look into that.
If we're going to take over and maintain, it's like the, out here on two eighteen where it used to go straight across. I think it's called Sandy River right now. That is, that is, or drain there drawing over. I don't know. You can send my down to there. I said something to them in one of our other meetings, but you know, you might hear it here. Yeah, I mean, it almost scratches your car.
Well, if you want to include that in the other drainage concern, obviously. And I will say too, Adam Parkhouse is really the facilitator for information that comes in. And so, that way, we're not heading or missing different people than having two people work on the same thing or nobody work on something. So, any information that comes in, we ask to file through Adam Parkhouse, our Director of Stakeholder Services.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. I mean.
Sarah, you mentioned that there was a structural, a minor structural, is that a culvert or something?
It is, it is. It's a small structure maintenance and repair. So, I can't tell you if it's being lined or if it's being replaced. It'll be based off condition. So, but there is, we do have visibility to any large or small culverts in the area and would include those in.
Is that in this area?
It is, it is.
It'll probably be up there.
It might be the same area that you're talking about.
It could be. All the segments you're talking about, are they in this area? Or are you including segments throughout Carroll?
So, let me see.
Because we have the county. Burrows, Rockville. Burrows is probably the smallest area, I'd say. Then you got Rockville. You got four segments.
So, and I apologize, I only have one copy of this, but I can bring those too, so.
She can put it on there.
I don't know if you'll be able to see with the color differential, the green and the blue are pretty similar. But the green denotes new State Road twenty five and the blue denotes old State Road twenty five. So, that's not too bad. So, if you can see kind of the little, so you've got one, two, three, four, and then there's this small segment down here that actually belongs to Crawfordville that we've worked with them and they're willing. I said, let me just go and do the introduction. And then we'll get the details for that as well too.
Yeah, I think those four will be, yeah, right outside of Delphi here. You send me a bill where it doesn't have to be burrows, then it'd be probably.
Adam, we need one of these, whatever that is. I know. I want one of those. That was really nice. Very tacky. I love it. That's fabulous. We're going to get one of those.
Producer plus I sell them.
Producer plus them better.
Yeah, we could throw one of those into this deal.
Absolutely.
I think, as, I think, I'm just going to ignore here, but I'm in favor of taking these over if all the updates are done, so it don't cost the citizen. And I'd like to see what the mayor wants for the trails, because there's a lot of people that use our trails. I'm kind of, I don't understand the tunnel. Is it going to be above next to the bridge, under the bridge?
So, there, I think it's shown on the other back.
Because I know Deer Creek floods all the way up to Dairy Queen sometimes. And if it's a tunnel, it's just going to fill up.
Okay, so right there. So, you see where the little, I'm looking at this upside down. And okay, so there's a little structure indicated here. That is where the tunnel would be. So, it would connect, Dan, what are the names of the trails there? Can you?
Robbins Trail and Happy Jack's Loop.
Connect those two trails. Right now, they're connected under the bridge at creek level.
When you can go underneath the bridge?
You can go under the bridge. But whenever there's a rain event and the water comes up, that silt's over and it's impassable for a period of time. So, the tunnel would be at a higher elevation and would protect from any watery bend.
It's been up for a very long.
It has, yes.
I've heard it had to fill in and you want to have more trouble with it.
At one of the, and I don't know where we are with, which iteration of the plans we are, but at one point, the abutments were becoming closer together, which would have forced the creek into a narrower channel and that would have pushed the water level up even higher. So, that's, at that time, is when we were really pushing for the tunnel. And that's still a preferred way of safely getting people through, you know, regardless of what the creek level is. And that, it would be similar to the connection, the tunnel under the US four twenty one. There at Pizza Hut. And so, that would be, you know, I think a preferred way. And then because the bridge is at a, you know, an elevation that is higher above the trails, that little flow relief that you see would be constructed with local funds to get people off of the separated lane on the bridge and then down to the trail connection. So, whether they're walking or biking.
My concern, will you just get flooded in?
Yeah, yeah.
Because that tunnel, because that water's been up to the bottom of that bridge, that area.
Yes. And so, again, there will still be, you know, the chance of water getting over the trails. Frankly, that goes away and, you know, it doesn't leave that much silt. But there underneath the bridge, I know, we tried, I personally tried hiking it a couple of days after a rain event and I didn't realize how bad it was. Your feet were literally, you know, sticking in the, losing your shoes in the silt. So, so that makes those trails, you know, unusable for a period of time.
So, what do we, what do we do from here with Endot? We just wait for you guys to complete the work?
So. So, what we can do is first agree upon the terms in which we'd like to draft an agreement. And we can have our legal team at the central office draft an agreement at that point. But I typically provide them a list of opportunities or options that we have in mind. So, we would still continue duties. Now, the fiscal year twenty nine one would be a commitment outside of that. So, that'd be something that I work with our pavement staff on because we haven't funded twenty nine and that's a safe, this will absolutely be funded. Because even after the transfer is executed, we still have a contractual responsibility to complete all of these projects.
Basically, the transfer would take place before the project, but you'd have to commit to.
Right. Now, I will tell you that the most difficult portion of a road transfer is everybody getting on the same page. Once it happens and we have legal to draft something, usually between thirty and ninety days, we can have the rest of it delivered. It depends how often the locals meet for signature and that kind of thing, so.
Ted, have you done this before, transfers?
You have to involve the.
I will, I will mention that our transfers are template documents. So, there's a lot of standard language in there that are in all of our contracts. I can get you a copy of one of those prior to the draft. So, you can at least look through that one we've done in the past. If you have any questions while we're getting, because I'll have to get on the priority list.
I got this piece of white paper here. It's got pricing on it. It said one, two, three, and four. Is that the option you were just talking about?
So, these are, these were options that the, and I can.
Yeah.
Do you want to speak to this?
I can answer any questions.
Okay, if you want to come up, I'll let you speak to it. So, our consultants here, you can go over the options that were provided.
So, is this options that's coming out of county and city or is it coming out of the state fund?
Well, that's something that we can talk about. So, we can also talk about the roundabout as well too. So, I'll let, you go ahead and explain the options and I'll step back in and we'll keep talking. So I'll let, you, you go ahead and explain the options and I'll step back in and we'll keep talking.
Okay. So we, we looked at the option to, uh, provide alternate routes for that trail. The tunnel gave one of those. And as well as, uh, multiple use path for the trail across the bridge. So our, uh, preliminary plan is city one, is roughly, you know, thirty percent. Uh, what we proposed was, uh, option one there, which is a shorter three-span bridge, uh, before discussing the multi-use path and the tunnel. And so these are just various configurations, um, for, uh, the three-span would, um, potentially provide the tunnel to bring the trail up in further way. And then the four-span is a longer bridge, but providing room to maintain existing trail, uh, in the area, and it was on the same line. Um, and then we, we sized the bridge in terms of width for various shoulder configurations and, uh, with an empty path protected. So we have, um, does your document then have some of the cross-section?
Oh, yeah. Just where it says option one, two, three, and four, then it says five foot, eight inches, then...
So we, we have a couple, um, here. So this is just being, just to kind of visualize it, this being option one and two. One was the original crossing bridge, five foot eight shoulders and six foot over the shoulder approaches. And then, uh, we gave pricing for the, um, the eight-foot shoulder, so the same thing, a little bit wider. And then the other thing that, uh, in order to facilitate this plan with having a protective path crossing the bridge, which is the same, sorry, I'm doing a bit of a problem.
Yeah.
The same, uh, shoulder configurations, but adding this protective path up to the side. And then that's the one that we connected with, right, uh, over the...
And that was option one.
Those are options three and four, very important. So we weren't sure what the preferred option would be, so we, uh, put all this together with estimated costs.
Yeah, pretty certainly.
I think the preferred option of the city's values was three.
Yeah, I, I think that's what we talked about at the, the meeting where Lauren was as well.
And I think for, to facilitate this, this, the color function there is a certain sense of physical, but it doesn't involve that much.
So the, the cost, uh, is almost one point three and nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, is that what I'm looking at?
Uh, yeah, that's what we, we estimated based on, um, the increase compared to the, um, the state one finance.
Now, the multi twenty is on the side of the park that goes...
I believe that's the thing, so...
That way they can just walk right into it, not get on the roof?
Right, right, and that...
Makes sense.
Yeah, and that, that's, that would be attached to that.
It would be on, yeah. So, uh, would be on the side with the corporate, like, side of the bridge.
Okay, so it'll be on the opposite side of the park.
Did I get that right?
I, I thought that was the same side.
Yeah, the side of the park.
We're gonna look that up.
Oh, yes, I guess.
Yeah, the same side as the trailhead park.
Okay. Did you say you're gonna pay for that, Mary?
Well, that's, uh, I think that would be part of the discussion that we could have. Um, obviously, if, uh, if we entertain a relinquishment, then these would likely get, uh, rolled into that, uh, relinquishment agreement. And, um, there would be no cost then to the county or to the city.
I like them.
I like this on the back.
Did I ask any questions?
Well, uh, I have a question. So, if they're gonna take over that mileage, which the bridge replaces, how do they affect the end, like that?
Yeah, so the bridge, uh, anywhere depending on what your permanent maintenance plan is, and we could share with you what our, what our long-term plan is, fifty to seventy-five years.
Okay, and this, this relinquishment includes, transfer includes those other portions also?
Correct.
To be up there?
Correct.
Completely.
Yep.
Whatever they are, just running up there.
The only one that I can't confirm, but I'm sure that we can make work, is gonna be the point seven miles in Crawfordsville.
Crawfordville, my other. Crawfordville, my other.
Right, but if you wanna utilize it as a truck route, we just wanna make sure that everything is included.
Our only truck route will be right there from Dairy Queen to, hit to Tepne County to go up. We decided to make that to keep the big trucks out of downtown. It's kinda hard for them to turn here.
That little piece, uh, connecting State Road twenty-five to where old State Road twenty-five, that's in Crawfordsville district. So to get to the state, to get to current SR twenty-five, you'd have to have that little piece from Crawfordsville district. Is that, am I saying that right?
Is that where you said Bill's best proposal?
Yes.
Although he said I could take the lead, so we're good.
I mean, it looks good, it sounds good.
What my thinking is, we've talked about a three to seventy-five extension. I'm gonna worry that project.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Seventy-five extension of Camden to the four lane.
No, I'm not aware of that project. Is that something that's, uh...
It's in the words, Kent, or Highway Superintendent, or Dairy Queen, been working on for us. We got, what, four stages?
So much to stand?
There's four phases, I mean, starting, I just, we got, uh, our piece out, it's on it. So it's a twenty twenty-seven, first phase is funded at, uh, twenty twenty-seven.
Anyone have a question? I think we have to go along with the law.
But then you'd also have MDH ones, I think.
Um, to me, it sounds good. I like the other options, because I don't think that option one with the, with the extra extended lane, they're gonna be walking through the ditch to get to the park. I'm still kinda concerned about the tunnel, but I think they'll make that work if they move it back away from the creek a little bit. You go through there. Cause I know we got people that, we got water dogs, that's, you wanna probably tune through it or something.
Were you looking for a water park, too?
If you're wanting to fund one out there, we'll help you.
Well, let's not go that far.
Talk about me, that's true.
So, yeah, I have any more questions, Lauren?
Well, I just, I'm concerned that, I think the end is going to be a long-term, you know, something pretty, something that doesn't really matter. I mean, it's nice to have a nice road, but if something's gonna be laid in our lap, we're gonna take care of it. We're gonna be thirty years from now, forty years from now, fifty years.
Laying Camden somewhere there?
If we got a, a highway-grade road, that we're responsible for.
Right.
How many of those do we have in the Camden?
None of them are in the world.
There's a new truck route. That's my concern.
We've done, there's a new truck route now, though, don't we, Kent?
We did.
It's down out there, we can't, she said, can't get that all up.
Right.
That's your bridge, most of them.
What's there go to read, so, so, and we expect that, you know, our attorney does this paperwork, I think we'd be good for fifteen, twenty years and if we maintain it, like we do our other roads, we'll be good.
I might be saying fifteen, twenty, twenty-two.
What I will also...
I just see what I say now, things like your break, and I don't, I don't, I mean, we're getting the improvements throughout Camden, we're also getting something new that I don't, we really want, must be after trade, so...
It's fifteen, twenty years, except, I mean, you said ten years a while ago for the road.
So what we do is we look at currently Endot funds projects that are, and, and this relinquishment model started prior to us having a twenty-year plan. So what we do, would do is we look at for roadways, we've touched road at least once every twenty years, even if it's just a crack seal it, chip seal it, depending on, um, what category road is and what needs that it has. Our five-year window is what's funded, but we didn't wanna stop short with the community that, oh my gosh, year six is when we needed to do something to that road. So, okay, let's look at the next ten years to make sure that we're touching that road at least once in ten years. Either by capital program or a couple of times by maintenance, a larger maintenance activity, um, whether it be chip seal or crack fill, whatever. Um, the bridges are the same way, with the life expectancy of a bridge being fifty to seventy-five years, we do look at twenty-five years, because we're less often to do a bridge deck replacement within five years. So we wanted to be fair, um, as we looked at the balance between this and, and how we offer it to the local. So there will be, um, and they're not gonna be significant dollars, but there will be an offer of operating and maintenance dollars as well, too. What we do is we typically look at our expenditures for the last three years, we average those, we take that average and we put it out across ten years. So again, not a significant portion, because we're very, talking about a very small mileage of a very low-volume road, right? So...
But it is something.
Yeah, and it's, yeah.
Well, I can just say the other portions are probably very low, but this section out here going for the hard one, it's traveled heavily.
Yeah, yeah, technically designated as a truck, it would be receiving a lot more.
And again, everything that Endot designs from, um, a scoping standpoint is to me, roads with truck traffic. We don't have state roads that omit truck traffic.
And all that paperwork, we put in the, we put the paperwork in since it's dead before, all that.
Yes, I'm gonna send them a, an example agreement, just so they can look through and see if there's any heartburn or anything else. But essentially, what we're committing to is the, the four pavement projects, the bridge project, potentially some assistance with the additions to the bridge project that, for the trail purposes, um, and then some operations and maintenance funding. Would be our commitment.
Well, I'm just trying to look out the camera, right? And he would always identify. Look out for future candidates. The future is for other volume towns. Well, that's what I'm, I don't think this is the best deal to build there.
I, you know what, I can't, it's not making you any promises, but what do you think the best deal looks like for Carroll County?
Well, if we're gonna, if Delphi's starting to expand in business, it'll make things easier and go more tax-out, maybe that's how they'd like to share in on that. I believe also, we want big businesses, like go down by, uh, go by Stan, by the, those buildings that have been retired, obviously. And when they're sticking all the acres away in, I don't, they want that out of Carroll County. Should be probably better connections to water, that sort of thing, but doesn't mean it can't happen. And we'd like to include flora and, you know, and we put Delphi's in, in some ways, uh, looking down the other one. And even for water traffic, and seventy-five extension was brought up, act, uh...
Year.
Yeah, that's not coming here, it's a push-up. And, uh, it fizzled out and it's been brought up again. So I think it's an opportunity for us to get some, something to happen there, too.
So Lauren, are you saying that if it had been, would have, that if this arrangement included, uh, potential funding, um, or assistance towards the extension of seventy-five, that this would be more attractive, or?
I think, yeah, well, it's attractive. Anyways...
I'm gonna be really honest with you here. Yeah, I am more than willing to sit down and have a serious conversation about State Road seventy-five, I, I totally get it. But I will say, I can't derail the bridge project and to have a conversation on new alignment is very significant. This is not Endot-Lupus District coming in and, and putting down some surface or, I mean, there's mitigation, there's environmental, there's right-of-way, there's all kinds of things, or it's a very long-term project. Even for, um, an agency as large as Endot, for us to do a new alignment project, you're talking about probably about ten years. It, it's not something to quickly...
It's been like fifteen years ago when we talked about, with, like, with them, nothing ever happened.
Well, I apologize, I wasn't in this role, I've only been in this role for thirteen years and I wasn't part of those conver, part of those conversations, but I'm here today, I'm here today.
A lot of new faces. I mean, every time you, you know, somebody, it seems like Endot, you know, new face.
Well, I've been in this role for thirteen years, so I can do that, right?
Oh, I haven't been in this.
Or no, I'm sorry, only nine.
What's yours?
I don't know where I came up with thirteen, nine years.
I just feel like... Yeah.
Twenty thirteen.
One of us to do it then without anything.
Well, I was told back then, the road was a, the mine was a chemical search, you were, or this was like, so... And to this day, it is not so.
We can't really speak to things that happened in the past.
I guess it's a check.
Understood. Um, but as I pointed out at the top, and if we do say that, even setting all that aside, there is a, a unique opportunity here, that frankly, you know, once, you know, we move forward with the bridge project, we move forward with the road projects, you know, I, I don't know, this, this conversation is difficult to have again.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I just called one of this just two months ago and missed the meeting. And that was built was one of that ones, that I thought I shouldn't go to.
Well, that's why we're here today. We wanted everyone to hear the same thing, we provided the same information and opportunity to ask questions, everyone to hear the same answer. Um, I, I'm definitely more than willing to meet with you on the State Road seventy-five, um, potential. What I will say is it would be difficult for me to include this in on what we're talking about now, because we have projects that are so close to delivery. You know, if these were fiscal year twenty-seven or twenty-eight projects that, you know, we're, twenty-seven's funded, we're working on twenty-eight right now, um, this would be a different conversation, but really, time is of the essence for us to deliver. So we're gonna, Endot has to make a decision. And that decision is based on the communication that we receive from the county. Um, are you interested, are you not interested? If you are, I will diligently to have a draft, um, executed as quickly as possible for your review. And then we can also set up additional time to talk about State Roads, um, seventy-five and what that looks like. So again, um, new alignment for us, any project that we do right now is five years out. So I'm, we're, we're getting ready to submit fiscal year twenty-eight right now for approval and then funding in the next few months. And sometimes, that's still not enough time in the development of some of these projects. So I don't want you to feel that even with a conversation that I would be pushing you off if I tell you, all right, we're looking at twenty-thirty, because I'm about to submit twenty-eight, which means I'm already gonna be working on twenty-nine, and this hasn't been part of that discussion. So there are also potential opportunities, we can, um, discuss about the local programs as well, too, and what those look like. So I hope that helps answer your question. Is there anything I can follow up on?
Uh, well, I wish Bill was gonna, uh, as far as how this looks figuring. So I think a little reminder, now, it's bigger basis. You gotta have a position, put it quick, it's that all this time, and it comes down to this point, I, this is a big decision.
Absolutely.
I mean, I can see it, you, you guys won't get enough, I understand that, you want to like, sleep clean with us, well, I'm here.
Well, there's a need, because pushing it out to another fiscal year risks the money. We're in a position now for the amount of money that, for the, especially the bridge project. If this goes into fiscal year twenty-five, it, it may not happen in twenty-five. You know, and so Endot made a commitment to deliver a project within a timeframe. When the mayor reached out, we've been working, and that's why we're here today. You know, uh, this is the third meeting we've had with at least one county official for us to go over this, so I don't know if the conversation...
I never got a chance to make it, did they have a very...
Well, that, that's why we're here, though, that's why we're here.
I think we all appreciate this touch.
We have another meeting the nineteenth, and Bill should be here then.
When do you absolutely have to have this?
We needed an answer last month.
But now, when do you absolutely need it?
Good.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's difficult to say, I mean, we, it's the other bridge. We look at the bridge, the design is one thing, we can do that, but it's the environmental and all the other gaps.
But if you did a draft for the next meeting and let the other commissioner be here, so all three of them can decide, that's what, I think that's what's gonna hold for that. A draft.
Right, but I, I mean, we, we've kinda gone, and I can definitely do, well, I can't say I can definitely do that, because I rely on our legal team to provide a draft. I can provide an example and I can provide what we spoke about today. But I can't really, I can't commit to anything more than that, because with, I can't commit up ahead from our legal team, because I don't know where, I, I don't have a place for where I'm... I, I don't have a placeholder on this project, to slide in, say, hey, can you do this one way or the other? So, I can work with our legal team and ask if she has the, Nikki has the availability to that, but I can also bring a copy of the agreement, that, and we can provide that prior to, so your legal team can look it up there as well. But really, what we're talking about is taking on these, essentially, four sections of roadway, right, and the bridge.
And so, in, in what you might be able to provide for the next meeting, would that include one, a, a, a close map of what those four sections are? And then what the options are that you've discussed today in terms of, of, you know, what Endot would be prepared to do? Would, would that help to move it forward at least, so that, Lauren, I understand what you're saying, and having, having Bill present and having this in writing, so that you have something that you're.